Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the March 2nd, 2010 City Council meeting in the city of Glendale, commencing at 6:02 PM. May we have a roll call?
Council members, Raymond.
Here.
Friedman, Najarian.
Here.
Quintero, Mayor Protem Weaver.
Here. My life's salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Najarian. The invocation by City Clerk Artis Pissaki. Please stand.
Please rise, face the flag, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Someone once said that our lives are not determined by what happens to us, but by how we react to what happens, not by what life brings to us, but by the attitude we bring to life. A positive attitude causes a chain reaction of positive thoughts, events, and outcomes. It is a catalyst, a spark, that creates extraordinary results. Let us pray that our collective brings our positive attitudes to these chambers for the welfare and prosperity of Glendale. Let our actions here tonight create a chain reaction of positive energy and excitement throughout our community. As always, watch over our brave men and women who continue to serve overseas and at home in our nation's armed forces. Let them be out of harm's way, and may their return be swift. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the March 2nd, 2010 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed Thursday, February 25, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Just so everyone knows, two of our colleagues, including the mayor in Washington, D.C., so I want to remind my colleagues that if either one of us have to go in the back room, we'll have to recess the council meeting until they return, including myself. So with that, what is next, please?
Next is presentation and appointments. At 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of March 9, 2010.
Mr. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the Glendale Housing Authority, there are no business agenda items for next week. We do have for the Glendale Redevelopment Agency at 2:30, Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing, installation of four additional lights along public alley, construction of a mid-block pedestrian crosswalk on South Louis Street, and construction of a pedestrian opening along the north side of the Marketplace parking garage for the Armenian Society of Los Angeles. There will be a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Redevelopment Agency. We have a number of items. Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing, this is proposed Broadway lofts and entertainment development to be located at 200 East Broadway. Directors of Community Planning, Public Works, and Community Redevelopment and Housing, this is regarding the downtown specific plan, and mobility study implementation update and request for additional funding for professional services agreement. For the City Council meeting commencing at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items. Director of Public Works, San Fernando Road and adjacent streets rehab project, Phase One. Director of Public Works, the City Hall remodel, temporary relocation of our public meetings. General Manager of GWP, proposed agreements for Energy Efficiency Program Measurement and Verification Services.
Hello, I'm Fritz Coleman from NBC4. Got a question for you.
We apologize if that is something that should not be.
Are you ready for the big one? I mean, do you have a plan? Have you built?
Presentations. Thank you.
No problem. General Manager, should I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, approval to issue a request for proposal for a three-year contract for the inspection overhaul of the compressor at Shoal Canyon Landfill Gas Compression Facility. For ordinances, we have an ordinance adopting relating to the smoking in public places and multi-unit rental housing. Action items, Director of Libraries and Director of Community Development and Parks, formation of the Glendale Arts Council. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, this is an amendment of an existing agreement for the operation and related engineering services for the Glendale Operable Unit and for the operation and maintenance of two Chrome 6 removal demonstration facilities. General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, preparation of an electronic operations manual for both the potable and recycled water systems and each of their major facilities. City Attorney and the Director of Public Works, this is regarding the 710 Tunnel. And lastly, we have a hearing, Director of Community Planning, Glendale Municipal Code Amendments related to the design review process. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. What is next, please?
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Comments?
Couple comments. Speaking of the 710 Tunnel, there's a bit of good news for those who are against the tunnel. The California Legislative Analyst Office just did a analysis of the legislation regarding the PPP, the Public Private Partnership, which is a cornerstone to the funding mechanism for the 710 Tunnel, and their opinion is that it is not legal. So stay tuned, this is an ongoing saga. Second question that I have, I've been contacted by some residents, Mr. Zern, who want to know about what are those big white things traveling up and down our byways and highways and streets and avenues?
Well, Mr. Najarian, I assume those are the new B-line buses that we have put into service. We received nine buses that have all been vetted through our inspection process. The one thing we didn't quite get to is getting all of the decals and those type of things on them, but we didn't want that to hold up pretty much into service to new buses. So those nine, some have the full decals, others don't, and as we get time, we'll put those on there. They're identified as B-line, they just don't have all of the bells and whistles we normally put on the bus, but all nine are working, and that's what's most important.
And hopefully, all the complaints that we had heard last summer of non-functioning air conditioning and breakdowns and all that are a thing of the past. These are the new buses we've been waiting for.
These are the first nine, and we have another six coming that you were instrumental in helping us with in 2012, so.
Coincidence.
We will have a 15, that's half the fleet, so yeah, we should alleviate a lot of the problems we had with the older buses.
Great, great. Enjoy them, and let's take good care of them, and everyone try a bus. They're really, once you break through the barrier, figuratively speaking, they're really quite enjoyable. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Oh, I didn't see her.
Very quickly, for anybody who might be here on these items, we'd like to take Agenda Items 8A and 8C off calendar. 8A and 8C.
And nobody left.
And nobody's looking disappointed.
Next, please.
Next item would be the consent items, including the minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
Have your cards with your motion?
Mr. Weaver, I will move the consent calendar.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Weaver.
Better. Or else I'm going to pass the calendar. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero, Mayor Protem Weaver.
Aye. Next, please.
Next would be Oral Communications.
And as the pattern has been for the current mayor, this is the time for announcements that you have for events. The remainder of the oral communication will be ended at the meeting. Three minutes each. Your Speaker, Ron Furor, reno.
Good evening, City Council members and members of senior management. My pleasure to be here again tonight. You know, the recent earthquake in Chile was a grim reminder of the capacity of Mother Nature to be devastating and disruptive and destructive, and I'd like to ask our city clerk if he would play a short message that I brought tonight from Fritz Coleman. I've shown it before, but it always seems like it's appropriate. Know it likes to go on mysteriously once in a while.
Hello, I'm Fritz Coleman from NBC4. Got a question for you. Are you ready for the big one? I mean, do you have a plan? Have you built an earthquake kit or taken any type of training? Well, now would be a great time to begin. Just contact the American Red Cross Glendale Christina Valley Chapter for more information on how to get started. You can visit our website at www.ArcGlendale.org. That's www.ArcGlendale.org. Do it. Just tell them Fritz sent you.
Thank you, and I know I join with the City Council and members of our fire and police and city personnel that want to encourage everyone to get prepared and to have the basics and be able to stand alone for five to seven days. That's the newest projection that's going out there for preparedness, so water, food, and all the other basics that go along with that. I encourage people to think about it. Now's a good time when you're watching the videos and the photos and reading the stories of what's going on in Chile to think about your own personal preparedness. So I couldn't miss this opportunity to plug that mission objective one more time, to get people more prepared and thinking about how they can handle any emergency, small or large, but it starts with us at home, and I would like to see this city be the most prepared city in the country. Also have another announcement to make real briefly. Coming up is our newest or latest super CPR training. It's coming up on Saturday. It's coming up on March the 13th. We have two classes, one at 8:00 in the morning, one at 1:00 in the afternoon, and in about four hours, you can learn how to save a life. We have a reduced fee for that, it's only $10. It's a great discount. It's a lot of fun. We're joining with the Fire Department, they're going to be hosting one class at their facility at the headquarters. The hospitals are joining us this year. They're going to be offering some safety-related classes on Sunday, both at Venice and Verdugo. And of course, Glendale Memorial will be hosting a class on Saturday. So it's a great opportunity for those of us who don't need it for our jobs, but would just like to take the training to come out and take a CPR or first aid class or learn more about earthquake safety and survival. So I encourage you all to consider that. Thank you very much. Thanks for this opportunity.
Thank you. The next speaker, Harold Fonsolo. Did I say it right? Close? Fonsolo?
Yes.
Oh, good.
My name is Harold Fonsolo, and I'm here to promote the Glendale Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, which is happening March 11, Thursday, that's next week, Thursday, at 6:30 in the morning. It's at the Civic Auditorium. Ron Say is the speaker, and I'm sure that most of you would remember him as being one of the famous players with the Dodgers. Tickets are $20, and parking is free at the Civic Auditorium. I will leave some of the flyers that I have with you so that you may be able to give them to people who are interested in the coming. Thank you very much for giving me time to announce this.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. And maybe those would be better on the back table, because we've all received them. I don't need another one.
Shall I put them?
Save it for the general public.
Shall I put them on the back?
If I put them on the back table, it'd be better, because we've all received them up here.
They're all coming, so. Thank you.
Mr. Mine.
Next speaker, Leon Mayer.
Good evening, I'm Acting Mayor Weaver, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here for the Glendale Library and the Friends of the Library. We took a hiatus for the last two months after 10 straight years of programs, and we're back again, and I'm going to be brief tonight because I want to cover three things. First of all, Elizabeth Gregorian is putting on two programs at the library that Armenians will be particularly interested in. They're going to be talking in English, and there's a program on March 18th about Armenians before the genocide. Very interesting program, very outstanding speaker and author. And then the program about archaeological discoveries in Armenia, and that'll be Wednesday, December, I mean Wednesday, the 31st of this month. Now, looking ahead to me, we're presenting Father Greg Boyle. Now, Father Greg Boyle is the founder of the Homeboys, which is the largest, most successful gang prevention program in the country. And he's written, he's a Catholic priest, and he's written a book called Tattoos on the Heart: The Power of Boundless Compassion. And I'll have more to say about him as we get closer to the event, but this is going to be an outstanding program, and we're going to invite all the church leaders, temple congregations to come and listen to him by his book. And again, the title of the book is Tattoos on the Heart: The Power of Boundless Compassion. Now, April 7th, we have another, we like to say, a mainline speaker, Tom Hayden will be here April 7th. Now, Tom Hayden, his book is The Long Sixties, From 1960 to Barack Obama. Now, Tom Hayden has been a state senator, he's been an assemblyman, he's been an author, and he's been a, going back to the 60s. He's been one of the most prominent persons in the country who's been in there from the beginning right to the present, and he was there for animal rights, he was there for civil rights, he was there for anti-war protests, and I don't know what else to say about him except he was honored by the legislature when he retired. He had one of the longest retirement ceremonies when he retired. So we're pleased to have him on April 7th, and I have flyers if anybody's here interested, and of course, these flyers are available at the library. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have no more speakers. What is next, please?
Under action items, 8A has been taken off the agenda. 8B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding furnished labor, equipment, and software for converting and migrating GWP electrical system drawings and related information into Environmental Systems Research Institute (ESR) GIS format. 8B1 is motion authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with NIT, the lowest evaluated proposer, for an amount of $1,095,600.
Sounds like a very interesting topic. Mrs. Dobert, you want to? I did Mr. Dobert.
Yes. So you, would you like a report on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you had a hand up over here.
Seeing as this is a bid awarded to the lowest bidder and that this work is necessary, I would be happy to move the item.
I will second the motion. It is required work, basically.
I concur. So with that, we have a roll call.
Councilmembers, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero, Mayor Protem Weaver.
Next, please.
At 8D is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding proposed agreement to receive the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, ARRA, of 2009 grant funds implementing the Glendale AMI Smart Grid Initiative. At 8D1 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute all necessary documents with the U.S. Department of Energy to receive $20 million.
Thank you. My colleagues want to report on this one. I do have a card.
Does this come under the heading of "Don't look a gift horse in the mouth"?
Mrs. Dobert, you want to answer?
Well, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, I don't think I've ever seen a grant of this size in all my years of working in local government, and it seems appropriate that we at least give some comment to the significance of the federal government seeing the advantage of investing in the smart grid system that's being developed here by GWP. The work of Craig Keenan and the staff at GWP is what results in our having submitted a competitive grant. I'll emphasize competitive, because it wasn't a given, it wasn't just a matter of filling out the paperwork. You had to show that you were serious about this effort, and frankly, you're competing with other communities for hard-fought dollars. In this case, we qualified, and the result is a considerable investment in Recovery Act funds in the local Glendale Smart Grid program. Craig is here to answer any questions you might have, but it is a considerable amount of money, and again, one of the largest grants I'm sure that Glendale has ever received.
I don't need to make short shrift of it, so how about giving the public an idea? What is about $20 million is not into pushing the road?
Craig Keenan, Marketing Manager, Glendale Water and Power.
And you got the $20 million?
What's that?
You got the $20 million?
Well, there was a group of us involved in this, but we did spend, you know, there was a time period where we were here 18, 20 hours a day for a month straight.
Really?
Putting this together. I mean, the timeframe to submit this grant was, you know, they came out with a notice of intent, and you had to go through it, and they kept revising it and delaying the submission, and then pretty soon you had like a month or six weeks to put together a grant to, it was a competitive process. There was $9 billion worth of projects submitted, they only awarded 3.2. There were some upwards of 600, 700 applications, they only selected 100. There was 33 municipals, I believe it was 33 municipals across the country that got a grant, and we're pretty lucky.
I don't know if it's luck or if it's the effort that you all put into submitting a very thorough report.
It was.
Out of for 133.
It was a lot of, it was a pretty thick report.
You get a lot of credit.
Mr. Weaver, you might take the speaker, and then Craig can answer any questions that may arise from that.
Okay. Hang around.
Okay.
Margaret Hammond, three minutes.
Good evening, Your Honor, Mayor Protem, and members of council, staff, and audience. Yes, I'm really taken aback by the fact that we are getting this $20 million, and one of the things, it's not going to cost the city anything, I take it. And also, I also take it that we are no longer, if we get this and it's implemented, we're not going to need to have meter readers. What will we make a saving on that? Also, as far as our, the general fund on salaries, that's something I would like to have an answer to also. Not looking a gift horse in the mouth on the $20 million, but you know, the follow-up is okay. What do we do with all the people that are presently employed as meter readers? It's just something I would like to question. Thank you.
I respond to that, please?
Either Craig or Ned Bass, and let me say from the outset that this is, this is a partial cost of eventually converting Glendale to the whole smart meter system. The total investment is in the neighborhood of what, Ned?
It's about $50 million.
About $50 million, of which this is a substantial investment to move Glendale in the direction that frankly, all leading utilities are moving in this day in order to have better communications, better information, and better use of our electrical and water resources. Ned, about the meter readers?
Yes, it is, it is correct that once the system is installed and operating, we will not need meter readers to read it. We will be winding down our meter readers, we will be training them for other jobs in GWP or the city, and that will be the changeover, so there will be a savings. It does not go to the general fund, it is part of GWP's cost.
Thank you.
So by training for the jobs means they'll be absorbed through attrition as vacancies open. The smart meter system, however, will likely also involve some additional staff. I don't know exactly what that is, but we can count on different jobs being needed to track energy uses and maintain the smart meter system.
Very good.
Anyway, this frankly is quite a coup, and congratulations to Craig and the GWP staff for landing what is a tremendous award.
18-hour days, eh? Better you than me, I'll tell you that. Any other questions from my colleagues?
Does this include the water usage also, as we saw in the presentation a couple weeks?
The smart metering system will include water, but this award is for the electric side.
Strictly electric.
Strictly electric.
Other questions? Now does our motion?
I'll move it. 8, where are we?
8D.
8D.
A second.
8D1 was moved and seconded. Councilmembers, Raymond.
Yes.
Friedman, Najarian.
Yes.
Quintero, Mayor Protem Weaver.
Aye. What is next, please?
Next, we return to Oral Communications, where discussion is limited items not part of this agenda. Each speaker has a lot of five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And the city manager, mayor for the matter, to appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
Okay, first card, Margaret Hammond.
Okay, again, good evening, and my name is Margaret Hammond, which I have been a longtime resident of Glendale and have enjoyed my life here very much. At a meeting last night at our coordinating council, the Glendale Coordinating Council was held in the Police Department and hosted by them, and one of the points that was brought up is the fact that there are going to be 1,000 parolees coming back to Glendale when this program goes in, that they are doing early release. What does that point out? We're already short of officers, and we, with the economy being the way it is, we have increased crime in home burglaries and so forth, and you know, and now to have these additional people being let out of prison who may or may not have other jobs and homes to go to, we're going to be facing kind of a problem, and particularly for the Police Department. So therefore, in my opinion, I don't think that any time should even consider being less police officers on the streets. I think we need more. If we're going to have that many more, I don't know at this point in time how many we have already in Glendale of, shall we say, criminals of various sorts and types, but 1,000 certainly is quite an addition to our population for them to be absorbed into our community. And then, one of the other things I would like to say regarding the business of the GWP, the charges, and I've talked about this before, and I will continue to, the fact that if you own, for instance, apartments in Glendale, even though they're vacant, they, you are charged for water and power and trash. Now, every apartment owner in Glendale is already paying for bins if they have chosen, as I did, to do it, rather than have three bins for every apartment, which would mean a humongous amount of trash bins sitting out, buckets or whatever you call them. And especially, it's very aggravating to be charged when I've had, for instance, one vacancy for almost a year. In this economy, if you go up and down the streets in Glendale, in every apartment house, almost every apartment house has a vacancy. So therefore, I mean, the people are not even, there's nobody living there, and yet we're paying not only for water and power, like a minimum basic whatever, I mean, but on top of that, we are paying, again, trash charges, that there's no trash to be picked up from that apartment. So I really do feel that this is not fair, and if I can get enough apartment owners out there to listen to me, I've talked about it and talked about it, I think it's like a form of double taxation, and I am really angry. I mean, to have to pay $68 for one month for an apartment that there's nobody in, nobody living in it, and that's ridiculous. So what I'm saying, I do feel that some of the members of our city are being double taxed on the fact that they are paying not only for the bins that I pay $58 a month for, on top of that, I am now paying, actually, it's two apartments at this time, I am paying for two apartments for trash that nobody is living in, let alone anything else. So, okay, thank you very much.
Next speaker, Paula Boyd.
Yes, thank you for this opportunity to address this issue. My issue is concerning the Water Department.
Please state your name for the record.
Paula Boyd. I'd like to petition that the city of Glendale change the way it builds multifamily residential housing units. Currently, there's a two-tiered system, and if a household or single-family household goes over a certain amount of usage, they're billed at a higher rate in the second tier. But right now, what the problem is, that there are some households or multifamily households that only have one meter. So even if you have one meter, and in my situation, we have one meter. So even if you have one meter, and in my situation, we have one meter, 16 units, but we're still given the same allotment as a single-family household. So soon as we go over the amount that a single-family household would use, we're billed at twice the rate. So in other words, for one unit, we're billed at the normal rate. For all 15 units, we're billed at double the rate. I'm paying over $100 in water for each unit per month. And yes, I'm getting $3,000, $5,000, $3,000 water bills on average, which is extensive for the unit. And especially, it hurts those who are low-income. A lot of the units that have, there might not be that many units in Glendale that are affected, but they're primarily units built in the 50s or prior to that point. And these costs have to go down, and they affect the low-income, so the low-income end up paying a double, end up paying more for their usage if they live in the building. The other problem is that if we went to low-income tenants, and I have households that they're making 1,500 per month, family of four, and I have at least six, quite a few households that are making that much, very few families are making under 2,000. And so the ability to pass this on to the household or family is also limited, because they're already on a tight budget. Can you imagine? 1,500, and you're supporting a family and two kids? So I'd like to see, and that affects quite a significant number of households, so I'd like to see if there's something that we could do about that. And also, if we went to the low-income, our rents are only 700, $600 for one bedrooms are accepted. It's very reasonable, and we're paying all utilities, water, gas, and electric. But if we are going to the low-income, if we can receive an exemption on our water, that we can receive the same rate, because if these same tenants paid for their own water, they would get an exemption for it, because it qualifies low-income. So what I'm asking, that for those of us that rent to the low-income, if we can also get that same rate for our water and for our electricity. My third issue is concerning water usage. We had a leak, and at which point I received a $5,000 water bill and a $7,000 water bill, so $12,000 water bill over two periods, which is significant. And normally, the city, had we been a single-family household, they would give us a credit for that, because they understand it's a leak and you get a credit, you know, one-time credit for that. But because we're a multifamily unit, we don't receive that credit. And I'm asking that they will extend that same credit to multifamily residential units as well as that they receive to single-family residential units. Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
I'd like you to put your phone number on your card here.
Oh, yes.
Somebody from staff can contact you, because there's quite, you had quite a few questions, concerns.
Mm-hmm.
It'd be better if somebody's staff to respond. Mr. Starburg?
Yes, if I can, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick point of clarification. You mentioned at one point in your comments that the single-meter, two-tier dynamics causes there to be a greater cost to your tenants, but then in a later part, you said that you pay all the utilities.
Yes, that's what I mean by somehow that it has to be paid. It's, the unit, it's only one meter. Because it's built in the 50s.
I understand that.
So I pay the water.
Okay, your tenants aren't paying for the water.
No, it has to, through the rent, yes, they pay 700 a month.
Okay.
And that, so it's a significant part. So I've tried not to raise the rents, but at, if I'm paying, you know, it's difficult. It puts the apartment owner in a very difficult situation.
Second quick question. You mentioned that your leak caused a bill of about $5,000?
Yes, it was 5,000, the first month, 7,000, I'm sorry, 5,000 the first, 7,000 the second month. It took a while.
What's your normal bill run?
3,000.
3,000, okay.
Yes. Yes, it's a lot.
Somebody from staff will contact you.
Okay.
You have a lot of questions and concerns, so.
Yes.
It's easier that way than try to do it here.
And I do have a question concern, in exchange for if they allow multifamily units to take advantage of the tax, the exemptions for the utility bills, you know, for the lower cost, if we have lower-cost tenants, and if we show that we're actually keeping our rents at a reasonable rate, which I think you can't, 700 is very reasonable, 750, that I could also understand if the building is sold in the future, that they're taxed on a percentage of the increase of the bill. So I think that might be a fair way of exchanging it, that, I'm sorry, not, they're taxed on the, okay, what is it called? Not the capital gain, but you know, if you pay 500 for the building and now it's worth a million, or it's worth 600,000 for that 100,000 increase, that they get taxed, they agree that they'll pay a certain percentage of that in taxes, which I think would be a reasonable exchange.
Bring that up with staff, too.
Pardon?
Bring that up with staff, too, when they contact.
Artie, do we have her telephone number?
Just ask for it.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have no more cards for Oral Communication. What is next?
As if there is no other new business, all we need is a motion to.
A motion?
So moved. Second.
Stand adjourned. 6:37 PM.